All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:05 Friday, May 10. So, I guess we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, I just want to point out that Jean Lee is participating remotely, and Carrie Gertz will not be making it tonight, she's ill. At this point, we are looking for next steps in the process. In our search for interim superintendent. Glenn Kuchar is here tonight from the MASC to help us figure out what our options are, and some possibilities to help us sort of think through this. It being Friday night, and my schedule being crazy, you know, say, let's put a hard stop at this, at 7:30 if it goes that long. So, I think I...
Okay, yep. David, do you think you could possibly also explain so people know? People have been asking questions, what happened? They didn't really know what happened the other night, so maybe if you can give a brief explanation of what the events were that led up to the meeting, and just to kind of go...
Sure, so on Wednesday, Wednesday the 8th, sort of woke up having it, just thinking that it was going to be a normal day, and at about 9:30 a.m., received an email from you saying that that Bill McHaldough had withdrawn his name from consideration for Hamilton-Wentham. About, I don't know, it was probably about an hour, an hour fifteen minutes later, but I didn't see it till further on, because I don't check my... Sometimes I'm right in front of my email, and I get things right away, other times it doesn't happen for hours. But I... A few members and Dorothy Presser received an email from Jeff Sands, saying that he was pulling his name out of consideration for the interim superintendent, as he didn't feel he had the full support of the entire school committee, and he was only interested in stepping into the role if he had the full backing of the committee. Excuse me. Fast forward another few hours, and it was probably about 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, when I was made aware of an article in the Marblehead Patch about a, one of our finalists, our last finalist at the time, being removed from consideration from Marblehead for statements made in an interview during their process. And at that time, I, you know, was reaching out to Dr. Harvey for advice, I spoke to Glenn for a little bit of advice, and tried to reach council, school committee council, who was actually on vacation, about sort of what to do in that scenario, just having a scheduled meeting for that night. Excuse me. The article was written and posted on the Marblehead Patch website at 11:00 a.m. on May the 8th. So, the course of action, so we went from, I went from waking up at about 7:30 with three candidates ready to be interviewed Wednesday night, to, in the course of, you know, seven hours, having two candidates withdraw their names, and then one with this situation suddenly surrounding them. Excuse me. At that time, actually probably about a little bit later, probably about 5:00 p.m., since I couldn't get in touch with council and wasn't sure what to do, I had texted the entire committee to actually let everybody know what was going on, understanding that everybody's at work and might not be available to see the emails in the course of everything that happened throughout the course of the day, to let them know what was going on. And suggested that we move to decide to not interview Dr. Levine at that point. So, you know, that's basically how we got into what, everything that happened before the meeting on Wednesday. You know, everything that happened at the meeting is public record at that point. You know, at that point, I just did not feel comfortable being the, you know, giving the platform for anything to possibly be clarified by the, by Dr. Levine. And, you know, it just didn't sit right with me about, you know, possibly risking the reputation in, of the school district, not sort of knowing what was going on. So, I did not feel comfortable being a part of that, and that's why I decided to leave. And that's the end of where I'm involved in it. So, at this point, you know, we're here to sort of see where the, what the next steps are in the process, what the possibility of next steps are, and so that's what we're doing here tonight.
So, can I ask a question? So, how did you become aware of the situation in Marblehead?
So, again, there was a news article in the paper.
And how did you become aware of it? Did you have him on like some sort of Google search, or how did you?
Excuse me?
How did you become aware of the article?
So, it was mentioned to me by a couple of different people about what was... So...
Did they mention that to you via email, or did they call you, or how did they get in touch with you?
So, I was on a phone call, and someone said that they'd heard some news about, about something going on with Herb Levine, and then I got an email with the link to the news article.
Which is the article that you texted to us?
Yes. And then I went, I actually did an independent search, trying to find minutes or video, and over the past few days, haven't been able to find anything. One thing I didn't do that I should have done was actually, I wish I had reached out to members of the school committee in Marblehead to see what was going on, but even that was after the fact. So...
Have you ever, have you heard from Naomi at all?
No, she's on vacation, I knew she was on vacation. So, I haven't heard anything in regards to, to that. She was, she'd actually checked in, wondering if we had chosen an interim yet, and I let her know what was going on, and I actually didn't get a response, because I actually had a few direct questions just about procedure with her.
So, tonight's agenda is to select an interim, so we're not going to do that.
So, it's to discuss next steps.
Okay, so should we vote to amend an agenda to do that?
So, the agenda was amended.
Again, the bylaws say that if it's within 48 hours, that you need a two-thirds vote of the committee to do that. So, we could just do that now, if you want to explain what, what it was amended. I did, I have not received an amended agenda.
So, the agenda was just, I received a call earlier in, in regards to the agenda with, from Donna, and I just had her amended to discussing next steps in the superintendent process.
So, maybe we should do a quick motion to change our agenda.
Sure.
I move that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee amend tonight's May 10th agenda to be such as next steps for discussion of interim superintendent.
So, it needs to be a roll call vote, Michelle?
Second, though, do we need a second?
Need a second, second.
Okay, we're not going to just, I think we should amend that slightly. I think we should amend that slightly, to state, given circumstances, that were not known by the chair 48 hours in advance.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
You did, then you better tell me the lottery numbers.
Yeah, no, there's no way I could have ever, in my wildest dreams, prepared for a day like Wednesday.
Yes, yep, I make a motion to amend the motion to read due to circumstances not knowable by the chair 48 hours in advance.
Second.
Now, we need a vote on both, correct? They have to both be roll call votes, Michelle?
In favor of...
I'm in favor. Jean, you still with us?
Yeah, hello, yes.
Thanks. Michelle?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Dude, that is mental, trying to remember everybody's names. I didn't call anyone Rocco, so I'm proud. So, now, roll call vote on the original movement, Michelle?
Yes.
So, I'm a yes. Jean?
Yes.
So, Michelle?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so I guess at this point, unless anyone else can help guide me, because I definitely need guidance these past few days, again, there, you know, really not being able to be prepared for a situation like this to come up, I think that we just sort of give Glenn the floor a little, and just help facilitate a conversation on sort of some next, possible next steps for us, and, you know, let's try and figure out where to go from here.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're now looking at what we call Plan B. And there generally is always a Plan B, and there are some things that we can do. Number one, you can reconsider some of the people that you may have talked to, but ruled out for a not discrediting purpose. For example, I know you're looking for an interim superintendent, and you might have been reluctant to hire somebody who you know is looking for a permanent superintendency, and you maybe didn't want this to be an audition year. You wanted this to be one and done. Well, you could rethink that, and talk to some of the other people who were looking for this position. Number two, we can talk to some people who did not apply, for whatever reason, and see if they would be interested in coming into the process now, excuse me, now that they know the circumstances are different. A third option is to repost the position quickly, and see what kind of a response that you get. But it's, this is not like a full superintendent search, where the universe of people are looking for this. It's a limited number of people, especially now, who want to work for a year. By the way, there was an individual, and I'm not going to use any names tonight, because we're at a public meeting, and I don't want to speak for people or about people who still have the expectation of privacy. But there was one particular person who I reached out to yesterday, who is probably our most successful and outstanding interim superintendent. He's had several successful positions, but he is recuperating from an injury from which he will be back to 100%, but not at this time. So, that person was not available. There are a couple of people on your original response list, who you may not have talked to because of whatever circumstances there were. I will just say to you, there are some people who, for reasons beyond their control, do courageous things, or do the right thing, and deal with the backlash. And as a result of the backlash, they decide to leave their districts rather than remain as a divisive figure. And they don't realize how hard it will be to get a job after that, because when I talk to superintendents about, or anybody, about what they'd like to do next, with assistant superintendents, bed director, principals, this is how I talk to them. I say, "Listen to me, pay attention, you looking at me? Okay, you don't leave where you are until you have another place to go. Now, repeat back what I just said to you." That's exactly how I do it, and some of them just don't listen. So, because if you leave a place before you have another place to go, it's hard to convince people that you weren't fired. So, there are superintendents who have terminated extremely popular administrators, but administrators who needed to be terminated. You know, you can be the nicest guy in the world and still be a thief, still not be respectful of your colleagues, still be careless with the truth, and, and every once in a while, you get the administrators who never do evaluations because they don't feel like it, and that puts you in a vulnerable position, and that's insubordination, they have to go. But sometimes they're very, very popular, and the public doesn't know why they've been terminated, or the public doesn't know what the rationale is.
Nor should they, necessarily, yeah.
There are such people who are out there, who are very good at what they do, but have that unfortunate, I hate to use the word baggage, but have that unfortunate... We could bring some of those people to you to speak to as well. It's usually helpful if, in this late round, we ask them to meet informally with one or two members of the school committee. And if one or two members of the school committee feel, not acting as a subcommittee, but just individuals, not a quorum, if they feel these people might do well to be presented to the school committee, then we put you together and talk to them. And we filled several superintendencies very successfully using Plan B. So, we don't, we don't look forward to resorting to Plan B, but if we have to, then we have to.
Yeah, because I know, like, sometimes searches fall apart for all sorts of reasons. Sometimes you get down to one candidate, and the run candidate isn't the right candidate. So, having, having a Plan B sometimes happens, where you go to a second search, yeah.
And the public nature of a superintendent search means that once your name is out there, you are fair game, and you're a public figure for the purpose of the search. So, you might be a finalist for the position two years after you accepted a subordinate position somewhere else. And I might be a member of the faculty who really wants him to get the job. So, I start a rumor that, that you're only applying for this job because you're going to stay for two years and then go to a better place to undermine your candidacy. Because it's a school district, you're going to have rumors, and the rumors are going to proliferate. And, and within 48 hours, that rumor has expanded to, "You have three other jobs on the line, and you're only taking this one to warm up." This stuff happens.
Yeah.
So, unfortunately for the, there's an advantage to transparency, but there's also a disadvantage to having everything so broadly exposed. So, that, those are options that we could look to, and if you like, we'll, we'd make those contacts for some of you, and that might include looking at people that the search committee looked at and didn't move forward, or for whatever reason.
Yep, well, we had some really good candidates in the pool, so when we were narrowing it down...
The names on the list were fantastic.
Yeah, and I think that what the results of Wednesday's sort of quagmire really just go to re- iterate your point on, you know, how things can quickly go.
And if the school committee was willing to consider, allow the interim to be considered as the superintendent, your pool suddenly gets a little bigger.
That was our original.
Which is, we didn't have previously decided.
Yeah.
Although, when we ultimately selected, we picked differently, but yeah.
So, do we...
Is that what you want to say?
No, I'll, no, I want, I think it's, I don't want to take much of Glenn's time, but it's a question I can ask as a new member, just the philosophy and the background of why we're, or who we're choosing, whether interim or, but this is, we can talk about it later, so...
We made it, we made that, that choice was made here.
Yeah, we kind of made that choice by who we picked.
Oh, yeah, but we can, yeah, no, and I know that, but just...
Well, I mean, I think we have to look at some, some hard realities here, right? We're losing our superintendent in a month and a half, in reality, a month.
Less than that, yeah.
Right. And our assistant superintendent also pulled his name out of the hat, and we know what a valuable resource he is, and, you know, how valuable he is on the open market. I think that's something that we can't discredit, and we can't sort of discount in our search moving forward. There is a possibility, I don't know anything, but, you know, there is a possibility we could be looking to fill two roles.
Well, do we, do we fill two, or does a super, interim superintendent fill that role?
Depends.
Depends on who goes where, when.
I think that, that kind of happened the last time, we changed superintendent, well, not the last last time, but the time when we had like something that was stable. Maron McGrath left, and then the guy who was here, I can't remember his name, left.
Peter Gray.
No, 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 no.
No, that was before Peter Gray, it was the business manager, I can't think of the same.
Samansky, I think his name was, but anyways.
Samansky, but I can't think of his first name.
They ended up both going to the same district together, and so they hired the... They might have hired a superintendent, and then had that, but they had pre, they had in mind someone who they were going to have as the finance person, and then, as soon as they appointed the superintendent, that person hired them, so. It was kind of like it ran side by side, because both of them were leaving at the same time.
Again, we don't know that he's leaving.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, it depends.
You know, for another year, but it's something that really has to be thought of as, as we're moving forward.
And that contract is made, that contract decision is made by whoever the superintendent would be.
I think we, so right now, I think, I, I feel pretty confident in saying that if we wanted to extend Jeff's contract right now, we would have the authority, and, you know, I'm sure we could facilitate it right through Mike to do so, if that was something we wanted to do.
So, there were people on the original list that I definitely was interested in hearing from.
Same here.
So, I'm happy, and I also, if you know people who you think, for whatever reason, didn't apply the first round, I think having a small group, you know, one or two people meet with them,
may I ask you?
Bring it forward would be great, go ahead.
Quick question, sorry, I didn't mean to, to, no, I've just been trying to ask the question. That original list, can we just go back to the original list and decide if there's names on that that we're all interested in? And if there's names that have come up several times, can we...
Original list?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a list that was provided by the MASC, M.A.S.C., and then can we call them in for interviews, because it could go...
We could do that, or we can also, you know, take some suggestions from what Glenn...
We could do that, or we can also, you know, take some suggestions from what Glenn has suggested too.
Well, this was their original suggestion, right? These are the original applicants?
How many, how many of you were on the search committee?
He said there's some that were off.
We did it as a committee, as a whole.
You did it as a committee as a whole.
Yes.
Yeah. So then you discussed all the names in public?
Yes, we did.
Right.
Okay.
It's part of the public record.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's fine. So everybody knows who they were.
Everybody knows.
Of those, and, and, you know, I know.
Well, those are the people that applied. You saw them all.
Yes.
Right, I was going to say.
So I'm assuming they're still interested, and if we reach out to them, I'm assuming they're still interested.
If they don't have jobs already.
If they haven't been made offers, yeah.
They don't have jobs, but also I really liked Glenn's idea of one, you know, in particular, one person who he's reached out to that might be available that didn't apply just because of a circumstance, and see if that person's available possibly at, you know, just figure out our pool and.
So are we still thinking of an interim, or are we opening up the possibility of an interim with the possibility of full time?
That was the original plan, interim with the, we didn't want to limit our power to, you know.
I was under the impression that we were looking just for an interim.
Well, we, we, we.
Without, without a possibility of.
No, this was an interim, just to hire for a year, and then how we chose was just for a year, but, and then to have a full search after that. But at the same time,
But they could include, okay.
We can look at, you know, having that just a one-year contract and see if that person works out and/or, you know, have a full search.
You know, and the other thing is we didn't, definitely did not want to, you know, I, I did not want the board to be controlling the decision for the full-time superintendent. I want to get feedback from parents, from teachers, and really come up as a community what we're looking for in a full-time role. And whereas, you know, we're sort of looking for a manager for the next year to sort of keep the, keep everything on course. You know, not, not to say that they, they weren't available to apply on that, you know, at that next level, but, you know.
Who did you publicly interview?
Interview?
Four candidates.
We had four.
Three, and then.
We only had four.
Four.
We had William. Yeah, Dr. Kusk- Dr. Kusk.
Dr. Kusk.
Yeah, William, Dr., William McCullough, Herb Levine.
And Jeff Sands.
And Jeff Sands.
So Kusk, McGolden.
Levine. Sands.
And we put forward three people because we knew two, we put as finalists, three, because we knew that two of them were finalists for Marblehead. And we didn't want to be in the position of only having one candidate because we pushed for the possibility of one candidate.
And Dr. McGolden did accept the position?
Yes.
In Marblehead, yeah. And Mr. Sands withdrew.
Have you got some people here that you probably want to
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Consider or reconsider.
Exactly.
I, I agree.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to put forward right now. Can we, is it possible to say, hey, let's look at these names and put forward and see?
I, I think, yes. I, I, yes is the short answer to your question. I think the other way to go is to really probably designate two people to sort of break down that list.
Designate them.
Not designate, right, so.
Subcommittee.
Right, right.
Let, let me
Okay.
Invite them to meet with me and, and maybe a couple of you just to, to talk to.
Right, right.
Yep.
Definitely want to word that correctly.
No, I mean, it's not, not my intent to do anything other than to use the appropriate strategies of.
Correct. So I just want to take my name out of that.
So, so so what I'm hearing you say is that you would contact some of these people and see if they're still interested.
And ask them if they'd like to come and meet with the chair.
Versus us, versus us asking you to specifically designate those people, you would figure out who they were and have.
I would, I mean, I could tell you who.
There are several people on that list that could have been, easily been finalists.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've received text messages of support from at least one of these candidates, multiple texts in support of one of these candidates.
They won't be texting each other.
No, no, no.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't the committee.
The acoustics in this cafeteria.
We know.
No, it wasn't the committee. It was the, the residents have expressed support for candidates.
Could we look back at our minutes and see who, because we all took a vote on who our top candidates were. Could we take a?
Yeah, our, our top four.
Then go beyond that.
There were others.
Yeah.
There were others, but we didn't really give other names aside. Oh, wait, let me see if I have.
Nope, that's not what I was.
I have, I might have it.
What are you looking for in the list?
Well, remember that night we listed, like, you listed three, and I listed three, and she listed three, and Jean listed three, and so there were several names.
I can tell you what it, I can tell you what it broke down to. It was
Oh, yeah.
Doc, William McCullough received five.
Yeah.
Herb Levine received four.
Yeah.
And Jeff, Jeff Sands received four to move forward.
Yeah.
Dr. Kusk didn't receive.
Well, he's talking the meeting before.
But there were other people. We gave other names.
Mahala, do you have the minutes from that?
Julie was, Julie was discussed. There was some stuff about this Lori.
Cuckenberger.
Julie.
Mahala has the minutes in front of her.
Okay.
Cuckenberger.
Mahala has the minutes in front of her.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Yeah.
Please.
I have Julie Cukkenberger with one other than one local.
Yeah, because we were limited to three, but we talked about some of the other ones.
Yeah, I, I know, like, another one who kind of stood out to me, or two of them, was Chip McGee and Lori Gallivan.
I can tell you that Dr. McGee is being offered the assistant superintendency in the fluid.
Okay.
As part of a package that the school committee put together to resolve their search process.
Okay.
And he, by the way, would be a wonderful superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, he was engaged in some controversy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aren't we all?
Not of his own making and following the advice of his legal counsel, but it didn't sit well with
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Something in his community.
Correct.
Yeah.
Would we consider Glenn's recommendation of the superintendent who's recouping from a surgery?
So I did.
Was he interested? I wasn't sure.
So did, when you mentioned that there was somebody who had the injury, were you saying that they might be interested, or were you saying they would not be interested?
No, he's not interested at this time because, well, the, the person I described to you is recovering.
Yeah.
He's not interested in this time. He wouldn't be available for four or five months.
Okay, 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 okay.
But we'll, we'll recover completely at some point.
Okay.
Serious back injury.
Yeah, that's not fun.
Okay.
So can we just, that original list that we have, can we do that same exercise that we did originally in each?
Could we possibly let Glenn, Glenn do it? Let Glenn do it?
What do you mean? He would give us names?
I mean, this is a public meeting. You can discuss this now, and, and we can do that.
I actually kept it on.
Julie Cukkenberger is an outstanding superintendent.
It isn't, it isn't.
So would you recommend that we just pick some different people now? Or do you recommend that we have that sort of interim thing?
Since their names have been out there.
Yeah, okay.
I would invite Lori Gallivan.
Yeah, she seems good.
I would invite Julie Cukkenberger.
Okay. Gallivan was from Sogas, correct?
She was in Sogas.
So, yep, okay.
I would invite Julie Cukkenberger, just as, as two. Also, Susan Kusk is an assistant superintendent with both academic and business and operations experience.
Yeah, she would be good.
But she is looking for a superintendency.
Yes, she did make that known when she interviewed.
And she's interviewed with you already, so.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I mean, and she's an excellent candidate.
And the feedback I've received is about Anthony Colonino. I've heard several, I've received several messages about him. As being innovative, dynamic, a culture, culture setter.
I hope he'd be happy to come before you as well.
And he's an assistant super-
Looking for a superintendency as well.
Yeah.
And can you, I just went, went into embarrassing right now.
Anthony Colonino, I've received.
Anthony, he, he was in Wilburn.
Yeah, he's an assistant superintendent. He was a finalist in Newburyport.
He was, or he is?
He was.
He was.
He was the first superintendent position in Newburyport. He was a finalist.
He looks like he's been kind of doing some interesting, sort of like academic, you know, like consulting work for a couple of years.
From Mindset, National Consulting from Mindset.
Can I, can I ask a question? It could be a bit, not the most pleasant question. We, I know that Jeff Sands did not have the backing of the entire board. I understand that. But we are going through a tough time. We will be in the next year. A lot of transition. I've heard unsolicited great feedback from, of, of him in the district, and I've heard unsolicited horrible feedback. But he is a known entity, and our budget has been level funded for the last five years in a very tough environment. Is it something that we would, could consider again?
So, I, I mean, I, that process has definitely crossed my mind as well because I've received a lot of phone calls, emails, being pulled aside at baseball games in support of Jeff also. And, you know, there's something that we can do is, you know, we could make him an offer, right, even and, and see if he's willing to accept it. But, you know, i- i- it's definitely an idea that has crossed my mind as well over the past, you know, four, five hours.
But, but I think as a board would have, and not to.
Right, no, definitely.
A board, and if, and if we don't have, you know, if he does not have unanimous support from us, then it's not worth it.
Right.
And again, being new, I don't have history. I don't know what's transpired over the last few years, but but just something to consider. I just think we're in a really difficult time moving forward.
You should, with regard to your internal candidate, you should resolve that quickly because the, the other candidates now, now know that it's sort of second round. And if they're in a pool with an internal candidate, I don't want them to feel jerked around.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's, it's a bad term, but it's the only one I'm coming up with at the moment. I'm going to come in for an interview if it's going to be a show and if something else is going to happen. It's tough enough or courageous enough to enter a pool with an internal candidate once.
Yeah, but a second time is like, yeah.
When, when, of the circumstances you've been through, if you, if you're going to ultimately promote your internal candidate, which a lot of districts do, and they do it confidently, and they do it successfully, just do it.
Yeah, like, like.
Stop talking about it.
Right.
Just throwing it out there. I don't know how, how everyone feels, but.
So my, my biggest fear now, as it was a month ago, probably even more now than it was a month ago, is consistency of keeping this district running as it is. And, you know, that, that's why I really love the idea that he applied and was a finalist because I think it's the most consistent route for this district to take. But, you know, again, at this time, he's expressed that he's only interested if he has full support of the board, which I completely understand, so.
So what do we, I guess I'm asking, what do we, can we, do we put forward names now, and you could reach out to them and see if they're willing to come in quickly for an interview? Or is that the next step in the, because I think we have some great names on the list.
I, I could reach out to the people whom you haven't interviewed.
Yeah.
And invite them to come in and talk to you if you'd like.
That, that's what I'd like to see. Because we do, we do have to move quickly, and I think we're all willing to put in some extra hours.
How, how would this work, right? So I know you mentioned that you would have them meet with the chair of the board, but I actually really don't feel comfortable with that.
Well, if the school, if the school committee wants to do it as a body, you can do it as a body.
So, well, because I just don't feel confident that I have the support of the board to do that, so.
So if you wanted me to invite three more people to come, based on the discussion that we've had here, I could do that, and you could talk to people who you haven't yet seen. And then you could weigh the people whom you haven't yet seen with the people that you also talked to and might wish to reconsider.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good idea. So we could still recon-
As quickly as possible.
So we could still reconsider somebody we've already interviewed.
You, you're free to interview people that haven't even applied yet.
Right.
As long as it's done in public, and the public knows that they're being interviewed.
Right, okay. So, yeah, I like that idea.
If it's conceivable, I might come back to you and say, "I've just heard from somebody else who might be good, and you might want to talk to them as well." We would, when you, when you schedule a meeting to interview three additional people, if you can do it in, in one night, you should leave on the agenda the possibility that you may entertain a motion to invite further candidates to invite. That gives you compliance with the open meeting law, and everything's transparent, and everybody out there can watch.
The thousands.
I can tell you that forty-one people watched Wednesday's night's meeting by, like, ten o'clock the next day.
Oh, yeah, because of the feedback you received.
Forty-one, because when I went to look at it, it was, that's how many people had viewed it. Might not be thousands.
So.
So when you just read those minutes back to us, were tho- that's when we just picked the three candidates, right? Okay, all right. Because I'm looking at this list, and I remember saying that I felt like I, I would be interested in talking to this
Julie from Scarborough.
Doctor Joseph, but then maybe when we came down to narrowing it down to three, I didn't say that.
You narrowed it down to four, right? It was.
Okay.
Right. Kusk.
I know, but when we went.
The discussion, when we talked about people.
During the discussion, I, I, I'm fairly confident I had mentioned this guy, so.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm fairly confident you did as well.
Okay.
Saying that you guys narrowed it down to four candidates.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we were wondering if you had the total, the total count on all the candidates.
Um, I don't have it right now.
Okay.
So I've got that at home.
So can we put forward as a committee right now, more names that Mr. Kuchar could reach out to and see if they're still interested and be willing to interview? Is that, is that the next step?
Is that what we want to do?
Is that what we want to do?
Uh, I have a little bit of a problem with that, just because they don't have the list of, the packet in front of me anymore. I don't even have notes.
We have it.
Oh, and your notes, you mean?
But, I mean.
And your notes, yeah.
Here it is online. So you can scroll up and scroll down and see anything you want.
Was it five one?
What?
The date was five one?
No, it's.
It was April twenty-fourth, thank you.
And that gives all the candidates on April twenty-fourth's meeting.
Exhibit F one dash thirteen, is that what it is?
I just have the names because I pulled out some stuff, and I left it at home, so the packet wasn't so big.
Isn't that the packet right there?
I pulled out some, the information.
Oh, yeah.
It's sitting on my desk.
I didn't bring it because I didn't think we were going to. I know the candidates I'd like to push forward.
I think, Michelle, you had, Michelle, you had mentioned the superintendent from Scarborough, Maine, correct?
Julie, I think is her name. Ju- I remember Julie, and I remember.
Cukkenberger.
That's Cukkenberger.
She was on my.
Yeah, Julie Cukkenberger.
And I remember, just because, the only reason I remember that guy is because I thought it was funny. They had the same, you know, they were both first names, Joseph and McCullough.
Right, and he was a technical.
Yeah.
Had a lot of stuff on YouTube.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just.
I remember my concern with him was not a lot of classroom experience.
Yeah, which is, I'm not pushing him, I'm just saying.
Yeah, Matthew Joseph.
Colonino, he was principal in Wellesley, right?
No.
No, we talked about him bec- being a finalist. Okay, David, I have things out of order, but I have most of it if you want to.
Actually, Colonino, he was, he was principal in Wellesley, Wolfham, Anglosor. And he was a finalist for a superintendent position in Newburyport.
Okay.
He was one of two.
Like, it's generically in order, but it's not, so he's wanting to be a superintendent. I gave Peter, Dr. Kusk.
Yeah, no, actually.
I have another thing from somewhere. I just have the names.
Jean, you still with us?
Yep, I'm still here.
Yep, I'm still here.
So, do you have any, uh, thoughts here while I'm thumbing through papers?
Uh, my gut reaction is if there's a way to, um, and if the committee would agree to getting, making an offer to Jeff, that would be the best option, I think, because continuity is gonna be really, really important for us all in the next year. Uh, and that is, uh, you know, it, that is my biggest worry. So, short of that, you know, every, every other option is just as good as the next one, so we wanna reopen the search or identify a couple of people. I don't have any particular strong opinion one way or the other.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, well, well, I'm, I'm in agreeance with you, but it, it doesn't seem like we have the, uh, full board on that, which kind of makes the point moot, I would think.
Laurie Gallivan was a nice, was a, was a strong candidate.
Yes, I thought so.
At Susan, um, Kuchenberger, Dr. Kuchenberger.
See, I know-
Those were my two, and I know Mc, uh, McGee's. Now, I had three, which was Laurie Gallivan, Julie Kuchenberger, and-
Dr. Kritzka.
And, um, Chip McGee, but he's off, off, so.
See, I know Kuchenberger was one of mine, um, that I'd like for, um-
Yeah, the thing that too that I liked about her is that Maine has done a lot of stuff around technology. You know, they're-
Budget.
Well, you know, they have fewer students, so they have more opportunities, so I think she might be, um, someone who might be able to bring some of that to enhance what we do here, because she, you know, maybe he's already ingrained in what she sees as an educational leader in practice up there, so.
So, can anyone sort of tell me off the top of their head if any of these remaining have regional school district experience?
Regional districts.
Um, I, was there a New Hampshire regional person?
McGee was Bedford, that wasn't regional.
Yeah, no, that wasn't regional.
No.
Oh, he was Bedford, New Hampshire?
Yeah, Bedford, New Hampshire.
Um-
Cusco is not regional.
No, no.
Yeah, Ellen is not regional. And, uh, Colanino was in a special, uh, international center, so that's a different annual, but it's-
Right.
And-
Been in towns.
Yeah.
Yep, and, um, Kuchenberger-
Kuchenberger?
Was in Haverhill before she went up to Scarborough.
Yeah.
And then New Jersey before that.
See, so, here, here's sort of my, my concern with that, right? Because I, I've taught in inner city and I've taught in, you know, suburb rural schools. They are completely different worlds.
But Scarborough though is pretty, yeah.
Right, you know, and so that's what I, why I'm sort of saying, you know, where, where can we find some similarities?
Scarborough is not unlike Hamilton.
Right, so, but again, so there's one candidate who, you know, sort of fits i- i- in a, in a very particular mold I have in my head of what we're looking for. You know, I'm not saying that any of these candidates aren't capable of it, but for coming in off the street and with the variables that are currently out there, or, you know, whether or not we will, you know, ha- have Jeff for much longer, things like that, that the more boxes we can check, the better off we're going to be. Because when, you know, whatever next sort of pin or domino falls, you know, it's, it's, we're sort of a, a better prepared for. A- a- and that's, you know, where my thought process is on this. And, you know, I'm trying to just quickly skim through all this and, and get a reminder. But I remember those were really, you know, here, here's the list of things I'm looking for. Here's, you know, how many boxes they check in each, fitting the uniqueness that is this community. And it's not even, whatever rural community, we're a very successful rural community at that point, or semi-rural, whatever we're calling ourselves this week. And that we wanna maintain the, you know, elite level of education that we're currently at. Right, so, a- again, it's not even, we, we have to make sure that we're not taking a step back. And again, I'm not discrediting any of these candidates, but, you know, to make sure that we're looking at how many boxes we could check off of how they're gonna fit in here, what their success has been, what, you know, in past districts, or wherever that is.
And we also have the advantage, it's only a year, so.
It, it is, but it could be a devastating year.
It was a rocky year once before.
Excuse me?
There was a rocky year once before.
Right, and I mean, and, and I know that it's, it was this administration that ended up sort of finally righting the ship years later, right? That's how long it takes to really sk- you know.
So, the, to me, I, I understand what you're saying about the regional district. I think the regionalness, um, affects the finance position more so than the superintendent. The superintendent, whether they're in a regional school district or in a city school district or in a town school district, they're the educational leader.
That's right.
And so, all of the stuff that happens with regionalness, which isn't a real word, but regionalness really happens in the finance department with the allocation, having to run a payroll separate from a town payroll, um, you know, those kind of things. I think, I can, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it's as important as being an educational leader. And I think we've got some candidates who are. And also, you know, if, if Glenn has a rabbit in a, in a hat of someone who wants to come here with regional experience, then I think he can just give that name to you and you can put it on the agenda. So, okay. And if it's a squirrel, we'll take the squirrel if it's a-
Please check your hat again.
No, but I agree with Michelle. I think the, of the superintendent's position, it's more of an educational leader and that the assistant superintendent is more critical for the regional aspect of it.
Yeah, and that's where Jeff really has done a great job, you know, figuring, getting that regional together and figuring out the finances.
That's right.
I didn't really appreciate that, that, that much until I realized, like, we run payroll. Guess who runs payroll in city towns? The city, town.
Right, so would it be fit-
I think we should be looking for an educational leader rather than a regional leader.
So, if we're just looking at assistant superintendent and superintendent, those with experience, so we'd have Dr. Kutzka and Dr. Gallivan, correct? And K- but Kuchenberger is also a superintendent. But does Gallivan have superintendent, um, experience?
Well, she's the executive director of curriculum and instruction.
Who is?
Gallivan.
Laurie.
That would be an assistant superintendent in any district.
Right, Gallivan, okay.
I will tell you that superintendents often use that title so that they don't have to get confirmation of the school committee to make the appointment.
So, Kuchenberger is the only one with actual superintendent ex- experience, correct? Yeah, so we have, yeah. And, and again, year, an interim position with the possibility of staying on.
Yep. Given some sort of community feedback that that would be what-
Right, right, then we'd open the pool and they could throw their name in the-
Okay, we're making a new list of boxes to see that, you know, who's checking those boxes.
Yep.
So, I mean, are we comfortable narrowing it down to Laurie, Julie, and Susan? Or-
Can we put four names on there?
I'm personally comfortable with narrowing it down to them and anybody Glenn can pull out of his hat and have meet with you, but-
I, I want you to interview these people as quickly as possible.
Right.
I would like to.
Adam here on-
I'd keep the number at three and I would not interview Dr. Cusco again unless you were willing to try to consider-
Push her forward, yes.
Her and, and, uh-
Exactly.
And that would have to be after you've ruled out the other three candidates.
Yes.
Because she's been through an awful lot just to-
Absolutely.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Why do we have to limit it to three? Why can't we have four?
Well, just so we can do it all in one night.
Uh, Laurie Gallivan, Julie Kuchenberger, Susan Cusco.
Oh, I thought there was one more.
Didn't you say, um, didn't you say Matthew Joseph?
Well, I, I had said him before, but I, you know, I don't, I, I remember saying him before, but I'm not, like, here saying, oh, we have to talk to him.
Yeah, and I know that Peter said, um, was saying, um, Anthony Col- Colanino, but I don't, I'm not quite sure because it's not-
So, this is a very disappointing place.
I know he's been applying for, um, superintendent, but he's only, he hasn't been a superintendent yet. Right, he's always the, the bridesmaid. Yes, correct. So, that's-
But I, I have received numerous feedbacks, positive feedbacks.
Where's he from?
He's been a principal in Wellesley, Waltham, and Gloucester. He's done national consulting.
Oh, he hits the W's.
Yeah, and then he, um, he's, was one of, one of two finalists in Newburyport for superintendent. So, he's looking for a full-time superintendent position, and so that would give us the advantage if it doesn't, if he works out, he could continue. If it doesn't, um, we could find another applicant.
So, when we did, if we were to interview this group, would we do it with the, would we do it with the intention of potentially picking someone at the end of the night, right?
Be up to you.
Versus narrowing it again?
Having second round.
I don't know, I'm ask, it's a question.
I think you'd have to, I think we'd have to leave it open.
You could give yourself that option, but not require yourself to do that.
Okay, so we would put interviews and then possible selection, and then if we don't, then we, okay.
Hey, Jean. Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking.
I think, I think that I'm gonna have to get comfortable with that and do a lot of reading and maybe a little bit of praying ahead of time.
I'm not looking, trying to, looking forward to trying to schedule this now.
So, are we, did we say four names? Is that what we're doing?
We are still at three names, I think.
Yep, I think we're at three names.
We're at three names and we're gonna do it in one night.
Was Colanino on that list? I forget.
I don't know.
Should we ta- should we take a, uh, just a showing of hands to see, or?
Yeah, but we should get the list so we're sure we know with the list.
Right.
Are we not doing the meet and greet with, uh, anybody that Glenn can pull out?
He doesn't have anybody.
Doesn't have anybody.
He doesn't have anybody in his hat. No rabbits in his hat, he said.
I was hoping that the person who we kind of mentioned was rapidly gonna be better.
Unfortunately, he is not, right?
Okay. We can't wait four months.
No.
No.
So, do you want me to read the names off of who we've talked about? I have Anthony Colanino, I have Laurie Gallivan, I have, uh, Matthew Joseph, and I have Julie Kuchenberger.
And Susan Cusco.
Susan Cusco.
And Susan Cusco, but I didn't mention her just because we wouldn't in- interview her unless we were gonna pick her because she's already gone through an interview.
Right.
So, we could still pick her, but-
I mean, we could pick her, it's just we're not gonna pick her to interview because she's already interviewed.
That's right.
I suspect she would be willing to be reconsidered, but I would not drag her up here-
Right.
Yeah.
For an interview that's gonna be a repeat of-
No, I totally agree, that's why I didn't mention her, that we would decide on those three and if we say, oh, we need to come back.
Do you wanna see four people, four more people?
I do.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
I, I'm voting for four.
I'd like to, I'd like to see-
Pick three of them and-
Ms. Gallivan and I'd like to see Ms. K- Kuchenberger.
Yeah.
Those are the ones I most would like to see. And then if someone else was in, I'm completely open to them.
And I'll go back again, I'll repeat a third time. I like Laurie Gallivan and I like Julie Kuchenberger. I, I agree, but I would also throw in, um, Colanino.
Okay, okay.
That would be three if- Colanino. That's correct, okay.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Um, I would like to see Anthony Colanino and Julie Kuchenberger for-
What's the deal on that Karen? I don't even talk about her because she's alphabetically low. Karen-
Oh, Karen Zaleski?
I don't care.
Karen Zaleski.
She wasn't, she wasn't on the top of my list the last time, obviously, so that's why.
Yeah, I don't think she, yeah, she wasn't on any ones, I don't, I think it was- Yeah, she wasn't on my, top of my list, I still- Karen Zaleski.
Jean, do you have a preference?
Uh, well, I, I don't, not because I don't have an opinion about them, but because I don't remember them.
Do you need the list? We have the list.
The only one I can remember was the one with, uh, Dr. Cusco, if you interview her. She was the fourth on my list. I would say-
She's still an option, though, even if we don't interview her in this round, we could still.
And I, um, yeah.
So, that's, that's who I would say to interview, but, um, I'm not objecting to anybody else. The majority would feel comfortable with. I'll talk to anybody at this point.
All right, so-
We cannot leave the district without a superintendent.
I, I, I think we have three candidates to interview and then a fourth with Susan Cusco saying that only if we move to a next round will we bring her back. She's a candidate who's already being interviewed.
Right.
Correct.
You did, did you say who you were interested in?
Uh, I did, I said, uh, Gallivan and Kuchenberger.
Okay, that's right. And you said, you said Gallivan and Kuchenberger, she said Gallivan and Kuchenberger.
So, do we want a motion on that? And then do we wanna try and set, like, a range of dates so that Glenn can work with them? Or, like, two or three dates, or? Is this something where people kind of clear their schedule if they get called?
Well, these calls get answered and they're usually available.
Okay.
They're usually available.
Yeah.
We're not always available.
Yeah.
Is next week too soon?
I think next week.
Soon as you can do is Wednesday, because David could post it, sorry, forty-eight hours. The closest we could do it is when, well, unless David could get ahold of Dr. Harvey tonight to post it tonight before, you know, seven thirty.
You could do a meeting on Wednesday night if you posted it Monday morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm actually free Wednesday.
Yeah.
I am free Wednesday.
There you go.
Stacy won't be here, but could you call me?
I know I'm saying that and there's something on my calendar.
Let me ask you this, how early can you start if you wanna do this on Wednesday?
We would need four people in the room because Jean cannot get here till seven o'clock.
On Wednesday, I could.
I can be here.
So, that means you'd start at seven?
No, no, so, that's where we normally start and why.
Okay.
So, but if we had four people in the room, which is not ideal, you know, we could call into Jean as well, again, not being ideal.
Stacy's out of town next week, so it really-
I'm out of town, I, I completely can't even call in, I have a conference and I can't.
I, I can be here.
I can do Wednesday, I could probably do it as early as, uh, I can absolutely do it as early as fi- well, yeah, I'll, I have to find a ride for my son, but I could be here at five.
I could be here at four.
I could be here at four if I find a ride for my son.
I can name that tune.
I could be here at four.
I can name that tune in two notes.
Uh, yeah, no, next Wednesday I could be here anytime. So, that, so that would make us four.
Oh, actually, next, this, it would be Wednesday of next week? Yeah, I don't have to worry about a ride, I can, my husband will be around to do that.
And, um, Carrie, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, I'd like to check with her.
So, if you started at four, how much time did you give them?
I don't know if we'd be able to start at four, hold on, because we wanna hear from Jean.
On what ideally he can do.
But to answer your question, the interviews went very quickly, they were done in, by twenty-five, I'm sorry, they were done within twenty-five minutes each. We set forty-five minutes.
Could be more in depth.
These can be more in depth.
Right.
I think we should take the questions that we had planned to ask two days ago and ask those questions.
Sure.
And how long were you planning on conducting those interviews?
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five?
You were gonna do a forty-five minute interview with the finalist candidates?
To an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour.
So, let's say you gave them-
Because we had heard from them once already, so maybe we should-
Oh, you could, okay.
Yeah.
But, but I think we should, I think we should allow.
An hour?
Yeah, I think an hour each.
Let me ask you this, you're gonna start at four, you're gonna start at four-thirty, you're gonna start-
We're gonna find out.
We're about to decide that, yeah.
What's best for Jean's schedule.
Can you, um, I was thinking about the questions, if we could also break it down by subcommittees, um, and have each person or a couple of people in the subcommittees ask questions that pertain to their area.
Oh, in addition to those, that's actually good, that's actually a good idea.
Right.
Yeah, so like the finance people could talk, you know, or, you know.
Negotiate, what, what.
What kind of experience, yeah, 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 that's really good, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, four is probably unlikely for me. Um. Sometimes, um, it's unlikely.
So could you do five on the phone, cause you're coming home or you, is that, and I'm not pressuring you, I'm not pressuring you, I'm not pressuring you.
Um.
I'm not. We can start at seven.
Do we have to repost or, or is the job? No, but I'm, I'm sorry, do we have to repost the job? No, it's still posted out there.
I mean, six is the best for me, cause I, I can be assured that I'll be like in a place where I can hear.
Six, seven, eight. If you do them at six, seven, and eight, we'd be done by nine.
Six, seven, and eight, with the possibility that you might run overtime. Alright, we'll try to schedule someone for six, seven, and eight. Now, is there somebody, this is all public, so there's no need for confidentiality. Do you have someone who, if we can't be here to, to do this, can greet the candidates, take them to a waiting room?
Um.
Who would, who would, who would you, like, who would do that?
Why don't we, see, this is, this, this, this was not on our radio screen for next week, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we could.
Who'd, who would do that if you couldn't do it?
Would be a town clerk.
Would the clerk?
Oh, yeah, we, could a town clerk do that? Would that be, a town clerk?
Our town clerk.
Anybody can do it.
Anybody can do it. So we could ask, we could ask around, we can ask around.
You're asking someone to meet the candidates when they arrive, take them to a waiting area and, uh.
Sit tight.
And then bring them in for the interview.
Yeah, or we could even ask like, Law, well, next week we bad for Lauren.
Who's already gonna be here?
Yeah, but, yeah. Oh. Maybe Mahala, cause if it's recorded, she could.
Okay, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to impose them.
Oh, we love volunteering here for stuff.
Because the minutes of the meeting.
This is how she wants to spend her Friday night.
The minutes of the meeting would be simply call to order and the following people were interviewed, unless you do more detailed stuff.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be detailed on those minutes.
Yeah. Well, plus, there would, could be a, there would be a recording, so anything.
So, just let me see that, I will, I will work with your secretary about coordinating who's gonna come and when and when they will come and who they'll look for when they get here.
Okay, so then, because that's outside of her scope, I think we should pay her appropriately for that. Do you get paid in an hourly basis or a meeting basis? Okay, so you should keep track of that time that you're working with Glenn. Yeah, cause it's not outside, it's outside of your normal scopes, just be, yeah. Okay.
Right, I can keep him here until midnight if necessary.
So that's what we're shooting for, six, six o'clock on the fifteenth.
Have we decided a time?
Six o'clock.
On Wednesday.
Yeah, so Carrie just said she couldn't be here till six, I was.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Carrie couldn't be here till six anyway.
He was able to get in touch with Carrie, so she can be here at six, so six is a good time for everybody.
Wednesday, that's the fifteenth.
Send you to an email, just to make sure you have.
At six.
To what? Uh, you and me, I sent you emails, so.
Yes.
Great.
And then at the end of the evening, you can make whatever decision you think is best for whatever you decide to do.
Thank you.
Write up how you think the agenda should be.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
Just cause, to try and make that.
Do, and you want me to email that to Donna?
We had it in, um, April.
Okay.
Cause I, you know, cause I'm like, alright, I'll try and figure out how to do this.
And CCU?
Cause I would end up sending it to you to check out anyway.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, I can do that.
It's like that vague, it's so funny going through this whole thing, like, when I was like looking through the Marblehead stuff, how vague their agendas are. Like, how do you even get away with that?
Yeah.
Like, it's.
Cause nobody, nobody makes them be transparent.
Words were spoken.
Okay, so we should, should we make a motion? Or do we feel like we have consensus? Should we make a motion that these are the people to interview?
Bite the three candidates.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
For, uh, May fifteenth.
Can you remind me who the third one is? Anthony Colanino?
Colanino.
Yep, okay.
I really worked on the last name and I can't even read it.
And Kuchenberger, right? Were those the three?
Okay, I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee move forward three candidates to interview on May fifteenth at six P.M. Anthony Colanino, Lori Gallivan, and Julie Kuchenberger.
Second.
All those in favor? Yep. Seven zero three one.
Seven zero three one.
Yep.
For, um, this round of interviews, are we going, going to allow back and forth? I know last time we didn't.
I think so, I think we wanna try and come out of these interviews.
Can you, you ask a follow. Your main question and a follow-up question that goes with it.
And allowing them to ask us questions, unlike the last time.
Yeah, yes, definitely.
I think we needed at this point.
We need, we need to make. Cause on Wednesday night, I, that's, was gonna be a different than.
We need as much information as possible.
Right, okay.
So we all have our questions from this past Wednesday and then should each of us ask, have an additional question based on what some committees we serve on?
Yeah, I mean, I had two or three that I had prepared and sent to David, cause I knew I wasn't gonna be here.
Did you ever send that to me?
I did. They were good, weren't they? You were jealous.
You're thorough, I will always give you that. Alright, is that it?
We've, we're fifteen minutes ahead of our deadline.
So we'll still, we'll still be meeting on the twenty-second.
Yes, cause we'll have like just our regular.
Yep, mm-hmm, okay.
That's actually a pretty packed agenda.
And will we have another meeting in May or is that the last one in May?
I don't know, I don't think so, I think it's the last one.
Yeah, there's nothing scheduled.
Next one would be the twenty-ninth, yeah, so that'd be it, so, um.
If, if we're meeting the twenty-ninth, that would be something, something is gone four weeks ago.
I think that we're not, I'm saying, no, I'm saying, no, I'm saying that's the last one, that's the last Wednesday in May.
No.
After the interviews or wait till the last?
No, 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 no. No, we wanna make a decision that night.
Yep, okay.
I will write that, I will write it that way, after Glenn tells me what to write.
Alright, is that it?
I move that we adjourn at seven seventeen.
Second.
All those in favor? Good work, people. In this room?
Yes. And Glenn, when you could.